You're good here, everyone. Welcome to the observer meeting of the planning commission. It's Monday, October 7th, and we are starting at 7:00 this afternoon. Tonight, the attendants are commissioners Boyz, Wazie, Quinwell, and Tom. Commissioners Bershaw, Adam, and Craig have requested to be excused for business travel. Therefore, this is the second time running. We're elevating you to a full member of the planning commission. These are both wise of the town. If anyone ever asks you, what's the value of having an office? This is a guy. Yep. So, five planning commissioners members present. We have Nicholas Kevin Walsh of the borough design officer. We have Michael Rakerich from the planning commission. Dennis Montana, Jared Hart, a few members of the borough. With that, we get started. Tonight, we have a very simple agenda. In addition to our normal update and minutes approval, so we will discuss for a few moments our work plan for the long-range planning projects that council has asked us to do. They're not going to tackle those projects, but we're just going to review our approach and perhaps delegate a few members of the commission to work on various of the tasks that we'll be working on over the next three months. So with that, we'll move on to our announcements and updates. For the chair's update, all I have to report is that this Wednesday, I believe, is the, is a public meeting related to the parts plan. I'm just going to check that. It is, I don't know how I'm going to tell them, but I believe it is a Wednesday night, tonight, and then on, can it be next Tuesday? It's the next meeting of the parts planning committee. The parts planning committee will make some recommendations as to the preferred strategies and approaches to upgrading parts in the borough. And then their recommendations will come to the planning commission, remember? And we'll be asked to comment on that and offer our recommendations. We'll be making recommendations, frankly, to council as that committee is your own. If you're interested in those meetings, do check the borough website to make sure the dates and times are correct. I didn't put it in my calendar, so if I spoke, I don't know. That is the only update that I have. So with that, are there any, Michael Rakerich, do you have any updates from the Montgomery County Planning Commission that you'd like to share?
Well, you circulated the map, Todd, that Tim Staub prepared. So I think that's really the main thing. And so, go ahead.
Let me get to that agenda item.
Okay.
What I was wondering, are there any kind of upcoming workshops for citizens of planning commissioners or processes you're working on that you'd like the public to be aware of?
So, if you're asking about the general workshops, we have those. But you're asking about affordable housing and things of that nature?
Whatever you've got under, like...
Okay. So yes, we do have one for zoning code enforcement. And I will post the information for that in the chat as soon as I pull up the email. But I just got that in my inbox this afternoon. So that's the upcoming one. We put on a series of four every year, do the planning commission zoning. And so this one is one of the newer ones, zoning code administration.
Is that for the general public or just for planning commissioners?
It is directed to planning commissioners, but it is, I believe it's for the general public. I will post the link directly.
Agreed. So if anyone in the audience is interested in knowing more about zoning code administration, which I know we talked about just about in the meeting, there's your chance to learn the ABCs of zoning administration. Okay. Is there anything else to report from Montgomery County Planning Commission?
I don't think so, no. Yes.
Okay, so we'll move on then to approval of September 3rd minutes of our meeting on September 3rd. Does everyone have a chance to look at when we do the minutes? Are there any comments, questions, corrections that anyone would like to offer?
Very comprehensive.
Very comprehensive. Do you have any corrections or amendments that I'll ask for those approval minutes as presented? Actually, let's ask for a motion. Anyone like to make a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well done.
All right. Just ask those out very much. All right, and is there a second for that motion to approve the minutes as presented?
A second to add motion.
Any discussion? Okay, so all in favor of approving the minutes as presented by Secretary, say hi.
Hi.
Close. And then it's approved by the committee. And by to zero, and we will, we will post those on the borough webpage shortly. Okay, so then we will move on to our business this evening, which is to talk again about our work plan for the long-range planning projects that the borough council has prioritized for us. I'm looking through my notes. So there's three, two main topics that we are wanting to mobilize on under the direction of council. One is to look at housing types, the housing districts of the borough. In particular, looking at questions of how well the code we have now fits the actual housing we have on the ground, whether there might be discrepancies in how we write the code to minimize the number of non-conforming houses. Secondly, to look at those types to see if there are ways that we can incorporate in the code smaller housing types or smaller dimensions for housing types that will incentivize or encourage people who are doing infill development to create more smaller houses. And thirdly, to look at the question of apartment buildings in the code, which are sort of treated generically as conditional uses, to look at whether there are ways, looking at different approaches to multiple-family housing at different scales, in scale of the same, also as a smaller space. So, multifamily housing, housing types existing districts. And then there's a question that arose, and I think Dennis is here because he's interested in it as well, is how well the code accommodates people who are interested in adding to their houses? How we can reduce friction for people who want to have a room or have a space like a green flat while not go for incentivizing larger homes? So this is some of the questions we're going to look at, housing types, apartment buildings. The second major question is maybe codification code.
Excuse me?
Yep.
Maybe certain things that started here?
Okay. Let's pause. Adam, would it make the Zoom go crazy if I turned my microphone on?
Would it be, so this is supposed to, you have a...
It will mess up the, it'll create feedback.
Well, we had that on, and then there was feedback that made it hard for people to hear. And now people can't hear.
Let me try one more thing.
How about now?
Okay, so if I speak like this now, Dennis, is it better?
Much, much better. Much, much better. Yep.
Okay, is anyone else having trouble who's online hearing me as I speak at this level?
I can barely hear you.
I can hear you fine now. I could, I wasn't, I was missing some of what you were saying before, but the volume is much better for me anyway.
That's all I can do.
Okay. Well, we have a problem we have, so we'll have stuff to try and remember to speak more loudly, I guess, because if we turn on the owl, we get feedback, and so we're running off a...
Think about the owl now. But there's actually three choices. There's an egg this that you do. So we're on the owl, right?
Okay. All right, well, we'll do our best to keep our voices up. And then the second topic...
We have those same problems in our meetings, Todd, so don't worry.
I don't know how that makes me feel. Okay, and the second topic is recodification, which is, for those wanting to know what that means, it's a policy-neutral exercise whose purpose is to improve the organization of the zoning code, particularly in regard to sections that have been added since the code was first adopted. It may not have been added in the clearest way. What we essentially want to do is make it easier for people who are using the code to find what they're looking for, so that like things are alike and so that things are organized more logically. So in terms, let's start with the study of housing types. So first, what I'm hoping is, Michael, I think this is a project that, this is this general examination of the parts of the code that relate to housing. I believe it's something that Tim said the planning commission, the Montgomery County Planning Commission could assist us with under its contracted scope with the borough, that he had the capability to do one project, and this could be it. Is that your understanding?
Yes. Yes.
So, in essence, what we're trying to do today is talk about the kind of way that research might get framed for you, so that you guys can, you guys can assist us. So, you know, the form-based code is written in a way as a typological code that really begins with the physical form of buildings. It doesn't start with quantitative things like densities, FARs, or dwelling units per acre, but it really tries to identify, isolate typical building types and generate a code that will allow for those, those buildings, you know, to be created. And then after that, after it looks at the building form, it does then begin to look at site dimensions and things like that. But we really start with building types. And so I guess the question I'd like to discuss is, as a building block to all the work we want to do to look at the residential districts, that I'd like to kind of frame an assignment about how we look at the building types. Are there ones existing that we should look at? Are there ones that are missing that we should evaluate? Are there areas in the borough where we see a conflict between building types that are in the code or in the buildings we see in the borough? And I guess I'd like to have everyone's input for that, so they can kind of help focus the planning commission in their evaluation of the code. Now, this is sort of a pure research project. From that, we can then get information that can lead us, help us answer a lot of other questions about additions, about nonconformities, about infill. But getting a grasp of our existing building stock and the gaps therein, I think, is a good place to start. So the folks have, I guess I'd like to open it up to folks' thought about how we might proceed looking at the building types in the borough, the residential building types in particular.
So are we talking about adding some that we hadn't already? I thought we added the cottage.
Well, so good question. Would that mean adding? It could. It could mean tweaking the dimensions we have for existing building types. It could mean tweaking lot sizes. It could mean adding. I have been contacted by at least one borough council member to ask, could we look at the muse again? So that might be some, that's a building type that we recommended several years ago, in which the borough council did not decide to accept that recommendation, but I've been asked by at least one council member to look at that again. So it could mean adding types. It could mean adding subrieties of the types we have.
Has the cottage already been incorporated into the design?
Cottage is in the code, yeah. The cottage is, it's only permitted when a property owner is doing infill in historic districts. So if you have a property not in historic district, the cottage is encoded there right now. It's only in the historic district, and it's only if you're doing infill in historic district. So are there types that you feel like are problematic or need rethinking or are missing from our code?
Is the goal of this exercise to pave the way for affordable housing?
I think the goal, I think council's stated goal was to, was to make sure the code was consistent with the houses we have already and to increase the possibility that we will have new construction at a wider variety of price points in the borough. Now, I think the question about apartment buildings is linked to desire to think about, are there ways to, you know, create opportunities for less expensive housing than, than might be available on the market right now? So that's part of the mix in that, in that way. And I think, you know, one of the, one of the possibilities is to think about, is there room in the borough for building types, apartment building types, that would enable people to get tax credits of everything? Like, will it come out with tax credits? So that would be a question to look at, too. What would that kind of apartment building look like? What would it take? Are they, are they possible to add? So that would, ultimately, that could be one of the questions. Are there smaller kinds of multiple-family houses? We do permit, there are two units in any house, in any house building. We permit twins. We permit multifamily houses that have up to five units in them. Are those, are those parts of the code that's working adequately? And all those things would tend, more than not, to allow housing to be created that is at either lower price points or more diverse range of price points. But like I said, it starts with the form, right? Making sure the forms are appropriate for the lots and blocks that we have.
It seems to me that the problem of the current code is that it still makes a lot of homes in the borough nonconforming.
Right.
And not the whole goal of code was to include all those properties? So I'm not quite sure how that happened and whether or not this exercise is as difficult as it sounds. We have the spreadsheet of all the existing homes, their square footage and their sizes of their lots. And we decided, I thought, we discovered that in looking at that spreadsheet, that there were a lot of nonconforming buildings.
Right.
So is it as simple for MCBC, Mike, Michael, to take a look at that and make recommendations based on that information?
Well, that would be one, one step we could take.
I only, I only bring it up that way because there isn't a whole lot of empty land that isn't protected by the Harb.
Right.
There are, of course, homes that aren't protected by the Harb that may be at risk, that if they were torn down, would there be some thing that we could write that said, look, if you're going to tear down a house that's post-1945, you are allowed to replace it with a multifamily home or a small apartment building or something like that? I mean, that may be a direction that's worthwhile.
Right. Well, in terms of, yeah, what you asked about first, so we do have this, I keep looking at you, but you're not, Michael's over here on my screen. We do have that spreadsheet that was done a few years ago.
Yeah.
And mostly what that evaluated, I think, was lot coverage. It was, it was the footprint of the house versus the footprint of the lot. And it basically looked to see which, which houses were inconsistent from that point of view.
And maybe think of another that also had the square footage. Well, yeah. No, footprint, yeah.
Yes. So that is, that is one measure of what's nonconforming, but there are other measures like side lots, frontages. All those things could create a nonconforming house or could result in a great building type that you couldn't create now in our home.
Right.
Another issue which, you know, I'm sure Dennis is here to talk about, is when, when a house is not conforming, or even it's conforming, but just conforming, it's awfully hard to ask, make an addition to the house, right? I mean, I've had neighbors who moved out of the borough because they couldn't add to their house. Nope, they got a way to help them add to their house, and so they moved out of the borough. It's not necessarily something they would want. So I know that stuff, I, this, the issue you talked, that's in that spreadsheet you referred to, but there's others, too, like, can you add to your house?
And that's what, yeah, that's where Dennis comes in.
Yeah, can you, and where are the friction points at? Is it lot coverage? Is it site setbacks? Is it fact setbacks? How do we handle all those things? So understanding where the friction points are could then be information we could use in the future to devise solutions or determine whether there should be solutions.
I think that's a good way to look at it.
Yeah.
It's like, should, how much should we allow?
I have other thoughts about that, but I don't want to dominate the conversation. It's all those metrics, coverage, lot sizes, front, frontages, things like that. And you're right, if we look at that spreadsheet, that would indicate areas of the borough where you would find that problem occurring more than others. So, and, and, I'm sorry, one more thing. I think, I'm not sure how the building coverages were established. Do you know, Michael, you know, in the, like, in the GIS maps we get from you, like the ones that we receive today, how, how the building coverage is determined? Like, how are those lines drawn? Who knows? How do you know where to make those lines on those maps?
I think the building coverage is derived from DVR PC data, and I don't know where that data is derived from. I don't know if it's from an aerial image that's somehow interpreted, but our immediate source for that is DVR PC.
My recollection is a lot of that is taken from aerial photography, and so it's not 100% precise.
I think that's correct.
Yeah. So it's an estimate. Are there other thoughts about how to go about those?
Not yet.
Not yet?
Have to dig in a little bit.
Where would you put your spade?
I'd put my spade in your digging. It's too soon to tell, Todd, you don't know that detail.
Well, I think another thing to do would be to ask Kevin, not tonight, Kevin, but like to discuss with Kevin Walsh, Mike, our borough building officer, where he has been seeing conflicts with the plans that people bring in or want to discuss with him. Kevin, what would you suggest we would look at in terms of trying to understand how well the building types we have right now fit the house, the houses we have, or the kinds of, like additions and proposals things are making? Are there clear things that you feel we ought to be looking at as issues?
Not so much. The one thing that I see often is, in most zoning districts, the impervious coverage is close to the building coverage percentage, and nobody's ever really maximizing building coverage, because they want, they need to get more impervious coverage. So I don't know if we want to look at adjusting those. So nobody's doing 55% building coverage, which is the max, because you only get another 5% for impervious for like walkways, driveways, everything like that. So I think those numbers are a little close, and they're not really reflective of what people are actually building. You know, people are generally maximizing those numbers, but they can't maximize both.
Are you, are you seeing, are you seeing issues with people who are wanting to add to their houses bumping up against different kinds of dimensional limits in the code that we might need to be looking at?
I don't think additions, especially in the rear, really have a ton of issues. We do see a lot of nonconformities in terms of side yard setbacks, where, you know, one of them is kind of offset from the center of the site. That's the one I see the most of, but I don't think in terms of adding additions, we run into that a lot. I mean, rear yard setbacks are small enough to where people can build backwards. Not a lot, really. It's, the facade area one kind of gets people tangled up a little bit, that we change that 115%. I think that restricts a lot of people in terms of what they want to do when they originally come in. But I don't think these limitations, I mean, if you have a 10,000 square foot lot and you can do like 5,500 square foot footprint of house, we're just not seeing that.
But we don't really see that many lots in our borough that big, right? We have, you know, we have 1,500, 1,800, 2,000, 3,000 in reality, right? 5,000 square foot lot, 6,000, not too many big ones, isn't that true?
These are one of the things that we're seeing specifically, and I don't mean to call out blocks, but like the 2, 3, 4, 500 block of Dudley, as you guys have, I'm sure you've seen, you're almost, you're almost at an advantage if your house is offset. So if your house is in the middle, you can't do the same thing your neighbor, you see a lot of these houses doing. So I don't know if there's any way to rectify that.
Right. Right. Because no one's going to build a 10-foot addition on the side of our house.
Right.
But they may build a 10-foot addition if they have room to do that. So it all depends on where the lot, the house sits on the lot.
Right. The one thing that I've heard come up, and I'm not sure if it was in the previous zoning code, but a lot of municipalities I've ever been in, there, it's come up more often than not recently with kind of the Harb and I think pushing buildings in the back of the lot, is we don't have any sort of minimum separation requirements in the zoning code for additions to garages or additions to other accessory structures. I don't know if that's for this conversation, probably isn't, but that's just something I see that comes up often.
Okay.
Should we, should we have a separation?
Please.
Between accessory structures and additions?
Like, is this more than more than a lot?
No, with the addition and accessory structure.
I don't know.
Because we used to, there used to be a 10-foot requirement for fire trucks.
For fire trucks, presumably, a fire truck could somehow get to your backyard.
Right.
I don't think it's possible.
So Kevin, are you saying we should have something in there?
I mean, I personally think so.
Okay.
The only kind of regulation I have is in the, either residential or building code, where you have to change the actual construction methods you use when they get closer, like five feet, three feet. But like on paper in our zoning code, you could get an approval for a house that's a foot away from your garage. And again, it's coming up more and more because of the Harb. People are forcing things towards the back where their existing sheds or existing detached garages are.
We have, we've actually just reviewed one recently where they incorporated a garage into the addition, so essentially turning a two-car garage into part of the... So essentially, turning a two-car garage into part of the addition, reducing it to a, a one-car garage. So we've seen them actually, you know, sort of consume, consume an adjacent structure. I think that's probably the only example of it, but it, it is, you know, it's something that we, we have begun seeing.
Dennis, from the point of view of the things that zoning manages, you know, um, site planning, building envelope, setbacks, things like that, are there issues you're observing at the harbor that you think we should be aware of?
Well, I think one of the main issues we've been dealing with, and, and Jim could speak to this as well, as well as, as Kevin, is we're seeing, um, a scale issue where we have relatively small houses that because there, there is some property to the side of it, we're getting very, very large additions, or we're getting proposals for large additions. And what we've been doing mostly is trying to scale those back, because we have, you know, our guidance, we have clear guidance within the Secretary of the Interior standards that we've been using, you know, with Borough Approval, um, is that additions should read as secondary, sec- secondaries of the primary structure. So we get into this sort of a tail wagging, the, the dog situation. So, um, that's the main thing I think we've been seeing with, with a number of additions, and we've seen quite a few, because with people not being able to, to demolish by right, um, you know, additions, it has really become where the action is. Um, so it's really trying to hold down so that you don't appear to have the historic house that's the secondary element to, to the, to the addition.
Dennis, do you, do you tend to see those in situations where owners are adding under their house because they would simply like more, more space? Or do you see that in situations where houses are sold and someone's trying to repackage a house for a new, a new resident?
It's primarily the latter, I would think. Kevin, what, what do you think? Because it seems that way, that it's mostly re, you know, someone buys a house and rehabs, and maybe they're proposing to live there themselves.
Yeah, I agree. I think, I think we've only seen two, that the homeowner actually intended on, you know, doing the work and remaining there. But obviously, all but those two have been somebody just trying to get in there and flip and maximize the lot. And they're, and they're getting smart with it, because again, they're realizing you can not only build sideways, but you can go build back, so they're almost, like Dennis is saying, they're almost adding a hundred and fifty percent or a hundred percent of the existing house. They're seeing that a lot now, and we don't have any way, like, really, really regulate that, so we're kind of trying to pull it back the best we can.
In the fifty-five, so they can do all that even with the building coverage regulations we have now? Is that because their lots are so big?
Yeah, and there's the ones that are getting closer to the fifty-five percent, and then now that we have the exception for, um, some impervious coverage being exempt, as long as it's part of a, um, infiltration facility in the residential districts. So they're playing around with the numbers on the driveway, and they are doing the proper stormwater management underneath of that, but they're almost kind of getting a free pass on counting their driveway now. By doing that, and therefore now they're getting a fifty-five percent house. Whereas usually, if you needed a driveway, you could only do like a forty percent house, because you need to do account for that impervious for the driveway, which then took away from your actual building coverage percentage, because they're so close.
Could you explain that a little bit? What's happened with the calculations about driveways?
So, um, previously, I mean, building coverage, I'm just going to say this is a three B, just because it's the largest district. So three B allows fifty-five percent for the first four thousand square feet, and then a little bonus for any fractions thereover. Then there's impervious, which is sixty percent, so there's really only five percent. So previously, if you had somebody that had a, you know, a nine-by-forty, uh, driveway, they might have been close to the sixty, but because they had to count that as impervious, their building coverage was really close to like the high thirties or forty percent to also achieve the sixty percent. Well, now there's, we added, uh, previously, you used to only count in the commercial districts, but now you can allow for some exemptions for any sort of pervious paving systems that have a, uh, borough engineer designed and approved infiltration facility below them to then be exempt from, um, being counted towards impervious. So they're still getting their, they're still getting their. What's that?
You're talking about some sort of porous paving.
For the most part, yeah.
Combined with a stormwater management system.
Right, but then, like, but in other words, you're really getting like seventy-five percent, eighty percent impervious, but, you know, twenty's not counting towards it, and that's what we're seeing a little bit more of, and more and more people are asking questions about that, and, um, I guess there's a cost trade-off where providing that infrastructure underneath is worth the, obviously, the square footage and impervious that you gain from that.
Well, I don't, um, kind of, at least at the beginning, one, not go into this thinking that just because the house is bigger, that it's bad, but I think, I think we should try to understand what's driving the houses we see, what, you know, our code is driving the houses we see. And then we can determine, like, from whatever point of view we want, what, what we think would be done to adapt it. So maybe one thing, another thing we could do is, um, between Kevin and Dennis, maybe we can get a list of addresses that are typical recent additions and just go look at them.
You come looking once, I know.
Um, just so we can be informed as to, and, and also, I, I assume that they've come before the harbor, that, you know, we can look at the plans and so forth. So that might be, uh, might be another methodology we use, is just look at some of these and, and, um, and look at, um, what the plan is where and what they built, and try to get a sense of whether we think this, that they're working for the borough. Um, Kevin, I'm wondering, in, in areas like in Woodbine and Iona, where we have the tiniest houses and the tiniest lots, um, are you seeing any issues there arising because, because of that? Because I, I'm pretty sure those houses don't really conform to the zoning code right now.
Believe it or not, today was my first consultation for, for a single family detached house on Woodbine in years. Um, and in this instance, it was, they're very narrow, well, they're forty feet wide, but they're deep. You know, this particular lot was a hundred and twelve or a hundred and thirteen feet deep. So they're, they actually have no problem putting a really significant addition in the back. But it's the first one I've seen, so it's hard to judge, and this was just like a conversation, not a plan. So I can't really see what they're really, really going to plan and submit for.
So let me ask the commission, um, are there, aside from the mews, which we've talked about already, are there other kinds of housing types that you're curious about seeing whether they either should be coded in the borough because they exist or don't exist in the borough, but we might want to explore? I think you remember, we had a lot of ideas back when we were talking about cottages and impervious about this.
Kevin, yeah.
I can't, can we go over again?
Yeah.
So it's more the dimensions that are for lots and so forth. So it sounds to me like, um, just.
I mean, clusters, cluster development, like a small house and stuff.
Oh, oh, nerve is a cluster development.
Well, I mean, if you have a big lot and you want to have like three or four, like we wanted to do on Segline originally, before they turned into the Spanish House, we wanted to do a cluster of small homes. But we weren't allowed to buy the, the code we had at the time, and I don't think our current code, except that they did it on Marion Avenue.
That's because they used, uh, they, so what we did there, that was concurrent with us um, expanding the options for infill for people who had historic houses on their lots, right?
Oh, yes, that's a little different.
We invented the cottage.
To go with the historic house, in order to save it.
Yes. And we also rolled the dimensions of twins a little tighter, uh, as another option for people who are trying to do infill where they have historic houses.
I mean, I think it goes along with the idea of the mews, it should be, how can you develop a lot of small homes?
Right.
Multiple small homes.
Right, so it, it may be, so that would be like essentially, so the cottage really was like a variant on the single family. What we, we call them, we don't call them single families, we call them detached houses, right? So the cottage was a variant on that. Uh, we created a subclass of twins for infill development. We proposed a muse, um, but, um, you know, I'm wondering if one of the questions is, is whether there's even, all those have minimum standards, right? I'm wondering whether there needs to be a look at whether there are types, whether there are also twins and detached houses, whether there needs to be a look at a type that has smaller dimensions.
Exactly, I think so, yeah, for sure.
Are you?
Well, I'm thinking, one of the things where I would insert my spade is to determine what are the sacred cows in housing in our, what are the things we want? For example, the, isn't it important to be able to, to have a, a housing type where you can walk out of your front door and walk all the way around the house and come back to the front door again? Or could we tolerate as, as some sort of a zero-lot line configuration? Now, I have a feeling I know the answer to that, and that the, the, uh, public sentiment would favor being able to circumnavigate your house and kill all the dandelions all the way. But that is not necessarily a efficient way to use mews, for example.
Well, at the, at church, on Friday's Avenue, they did the goal of those detached homes.
Those are the old codes, actually.
Next to the Berry House, yeah. I mean, that's the kind of building you're talking about.
At some point, at some point, we said we didn't want to see townhouses. And I think that's largely because, Michael, largely because townhouses in the late twentieth century have gotten kind of a bad name, a bad reputation. They are considered to be somehow cheap and undesirable.
How were the, um, townhouses behind, like, north of Narber Park? Yeah, and also.
Those are the old codes, all the old code, okay.
Yeah.
So there you go.
But you can really pack them in, if you, if you, uh, have, have elevated the design the bar for the designing of townhouses, uh, so that they didn't look like, take the pressure all the time. Uh, you could, you could achieve what we're, I think what we're talking about in terms of housing density.
Well, what's the difference between a townhouse and a row?
There is no difference.
I mean, it just, yeah, you just think of something that's three-story tall.
One of them is in, is in Philadelphia, and one of them is over.
Right, but, well, no, I'm thinking of like Iona, I mean, um, Wood, Woodbine, where there's a whole row.
Yeah.
And, and the end of Hampton.
Those are row houses.
Row houses. We, we allow that housing type.
We don't allow that, right?
No, we don't.
We do. Well, row houses are allowed.
Row houses.
On a single lots, but not on one lot. You can't do more than one on the lot, I guess, after you're.
Well, see, that's where like, we're talking about, uh, multiple deeded structures, if you will, on one.
On one line, yeah.
So, you know, it's, it's, that's really a condominium, uh, essentially. And the notion, you know, you don't really need party walls to do condominium development, you just need.
No, you don't.
To be any condominium.
Just a form of a building.
We do, uh, row houses.
Yeah.
Yeah, we only have one little area.
Built on a row house.
Four B. Yeah, which is basically zoning around the existing row house.
So the question is whether you can have a row house, rather than one, you can have a row house development on a single lot.
That, you know, our team.
Multiple row houses on one lot.
Could you have one lot, but have multiple dwelling units on it? Uh, probably, so what we would allow is, I think, uh, we would allow a detached house with two units in it, we would allow that. And I think we would allow a, um, it's called a multiple, it's called a multi-family house, which has up to five units in it.
It doesn't matter how they are arranged, it may be one lot.
Our, our definition of a row house has, has one or two vertical party walls on a lot line with another dwelling of the same type.
Yeah.
Along the primary. So I think Heidi, this is actually, so these are actually good questions to look at, like, how do the row houses almost work? It has to be three in a row, otherwise it's a twin. Yeah, so how do they work, and are they, do they fit what we have, and could they be improved on? And Heidi, the multi-family house is, is really coded if you look at the urban design, look at form rules, to be like one of those big houses.
It looks like a house.
Yes, it's not like a, right?
The vibe in the small unit, yeah.
So those are two good things to look at. Is to look at the row house type and how robust it is. Does it fit what we have now? How could it be used differently? Um, um.
Block, okay.
Okay. No, no, okay.
No, I'm, I'm, well, I'm just, I, again, you know, it's like, there's two things. One is to have a discussion, if there is a strategy, like, we're trying to accomplish something in the marketplace for the town to talk about what policies might achieve a goal, and then there's maybe a, versus like, okay, what's a, what's a, an urban design approach related around maybe a specific example? The, uh, I mean, just note that if the goal is to have small domiciles that are affordable, you know, that are efficient from a land perspective, then, you know, uh, traditional formats include like triple deckers, and, um, you can also do like four packs and six packs and seven packs on, like, the, the, the typical American technology would be, you take two twenty-five-foot house lots, and you put, uh, one apartment building on it, and you can put, traditionally with, you know, you have two stairwells, the, the, the formal stair and the rear stair. I don't really know how, not an expert on where we are with building codes with apartment stairs right now, but, you know, you, you essentially have, you know, two units, uh, the two units above and up to two more above if you want to do three stories. And so instead of two houses, you get five apartments or seven apartments.
Right.
And from a morphology perspective, right, you, you know, you detail it in a craftsman architecture or whatever, and blends in with craftsman houses just fine.
Right.
Yeah.
So to get to your original question, um, I think, I think council has given us broad policy objectives. One is, one is to make sure the kinds of buildings we see throughout the borough already could be built under the code we have, and, uh, and that the kinds of houses, and the houses we have already can be moved from non-conforming to conforming, if possible. So, and the second one, I think, is to look at how we can have, um, uh, infill that reaches not just the highest standard of market development, but reaches a wide range of price points, which is another way of saying, what's an efficient way to to do infill that allows us to, you know, have, have units that come in at different pricing ranges.
Well.
So those are, those would be the goals. And the, 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 uh, the ideas you talked about, so some of them, we haven't talked about apartment buildings much, but that's because Jennifer's not here, but I do think it is important to look at, as I said earlier, the apartment building type, and whether there's variations or smaller components, like four, six, eight, that could be, uh, could be, um, um, coded more specifically than just the generic apartment building, you know?
Well, I, so I think there's also like, we might be wasting our time if nobody's going to build any of them, but the, when I say apartment building too, that, my sense is that there still are, you know, fours and sixes and sevens out there as apartments, but I wouldn't be surprised if, uh, you know, that it might lend itself better to a small condo association at this point than an apartment, because it's it's such, you know, it's, it's too small to be run as a commercial property, it would have to be run by like an owner, investor, probably, maybe you have.
What would, what would the, um, physical form of a small condo association? What would, what would the, um, physical form of a small condo association, I mean, is it a different kind of morphology?
No, it's a, no, like traditionally, I think that, you know, historically, people would put out these four, six apartment units. Um, because, you know, it aligned with small scale finance and small scale management, like one person can manage this thing, right? And, and own it as an investor, uh, they might live in it, right? And then rent out the other units. But, uh, you know, you wouldn't get probably a big company building those types anymore, right? They would want more scale. So you can take what was the traditional four unit or six unit apartment building and just turn it into condos. Like just, you know, because a lot of times they'll actually have one boiler for heat. As a traditional apartment building would have had one central heating plant. I mean, these days you could probably do heat pumps and it would be even better, but economically, if you want to break this down though, like again, if we're using the example of two 25 foot lots, and I'm not sure how many 25 foot lots Narber has, but, you know, uh, if you could put two houses on those lots now that are like point eight, point nine million, right? For new build, right? So your total, total income would be close to two million. So if you put seven units in at 280,000 each, that gets you two million. So, but it might be a little more complicated and expensive to build seven units than two million dollar homes. So I, I just, I, I feel like we're, you know, we can, we can zone away, but I don't know, it's a practical matter if it will help.
I don't know yet either, but one thing I will say though is, the form of the building doesn't make the assumption about whether it's like a rental or a condo.
It doesn't, doesn't necessarily matter either.
Right.
Uh, per se, but it would, I guess, what matters is essentially what is the market renting for, you know, renting a square foot or purchasing a square foot of a, in a, in a flat.
Right, right. Well, you know, the, the value of the land is dependent on what you can do with it. And so if, if, if the policy were to encourage more smaller units, there may be policies that, that discourage single laundry units too. So that, you know, I mean, part of this, I mean, like I said at the beginning, part of it is just to look at, because the form-based code starts with the form, is to look at forms that we think are appropriate for the borough. Um, and then we can consider, you know, ways of encouraging them or discouraging them through the way the code is written. There's no telling whether the way the market behaves, this year is the way it's going to behave, five years from now, you know, if there's an election and there's federal funding, multifamily housing, all of a sudden, maybe that becomes one of those, who knows? But I think, I think that looking at it from the form point of view is the way that we've, we've tended to start. Um, but I do think, I, I hope that Jennifer, who actually knows this market, she designs, she works for, uh, she work for a design build company or just a designer?
No, just a designer, that's architecture firm.
Yeah, but I think she knows this field pretty well and can probably help us think about, not just what works from a form point of view, but how the market would respond to different kinds of building types. So I don't.
So what does the council want?
All I can tell you is what they wrote in that one page memo, which is.
I have to still ask the question.
Yeah.
What does the council want? And we can deliver whatever they want. If they want, if they want to see multifamily, that's basically what we're talking about, whether it's condominiums or apartments, doesn't matter, you know? What, what is the image that council has in mind? Other, we can go around and around and around, if, but if we, uh, are, uh, if we're being asked to make, make way for affordable housing, for example, what are we willing to sacrifice in order to achieve that? What is the council willing to sacrifice? When we set about doing the form-based code, many moons we've had, of course, the idea was that the, the form of most of the buildings in the town was deemed to be desirable and to be the aiming point for future development. That was the fundamental concept of the form-based code for Narber. Is that, is, so I go back to my comment earlier, what is, what is, what is sacred? What is, what are the things that the council wants to preserve in the town? And what are the things that they're willing or interested in sacrificing uh, in order to achieve energy efficiency, affordable housing or other, other goals? What are the goals? I, I can't tell from where I sit.
Right.
I need to know that before I sign on to do any of this stuff. What are the goals?
Well, I can't say.
I know you don't know the answer to that.
Yes, I can't say we understand the goals any more than what was written. Um, however, I do know that there's some council members who are trying to get more clearance or clarity about that for us. Um, so my thinking was we could take some very initial steps just to understand how our code interacts with what we're seeing right now and kind of go step by step with council. Um, if we learn certain things, we can share that and perhaps get, as we're doing the beginning of the research, get further guidance. I don't think we are anywhere close to ready to begin to recommend like a particular code, but we may be able to say, we think, uh, from this preliminary study, um, there are, there's some adjustments we can make to our code right now, or there are some building types we think we should explore, you know, encouraging through our code or whatever. Um, it may take a little bit of show and tell to get a better guidance. I agree with you, we need to listen very carefully to council's guidance. We have what we have right now, I'm thinking about how can we do little steps where we're going to show ideas and options and get further guidance from council about this.
I, I personally don't like the idea that we're framing this as that we need to sacrifice anything personally. I, I don't know that anyone's been asked to sacrifice anything yet. And I, I just, you know, if we're talking about housing, the borough has, side by side, apartments with single family homes, large apartment buildings, small apartment buildings, row houses. You know, there's almost, there's a complete diversity of housing stock from block to block today. So I think that a lot of the form-based discussion is about how to make buildings compatible with the, with their context. Not to say they all need to be exactly the same thing on block or whatever, they all need, you know, so, but in terms of, if, if the goal is policy to have more affordability to the extent that we can, which is, you know, then, I think we, we had that presentation by Penrose that from one perspective, you could try to have policy-controlled housing that where you, you took to, to rent it, you would have to qualify from an income point of view, and that has to be run as a specific kind of business that's regulated. Because otherwise the market rent is just going to be whatever it is. Uh, so we would have to have parcels and, you know, housing developers and managers that would provide, you know, affordable housing, um, where affordability in this case is often defined by like 80% of the income or something, so it's not, I mean, it's still pretty, pretty pricey. Um, we can try to influence, uh, price by more supply, because it's also really supply and demand, but the boroughs doesn't have, I don't think, the ability to control, um, you know, we, we would never go supply in the same way that demand fluctuates in Mollamarion, right?
Yes, it's a regional problem.
It's a regional problem, it's a, it's a, it's a larger problem. And then I guess the third tool is to try to provide smaller housing types under some, under the theory that per square foot, there, there must be some, so you would, you know, trade off where you would get less square footage, uh, and therefore pay less. Um, and again, try to, I think that the corollary is to get more of those units into particular developments, whether they be flats, in buildings, small apartments, if you will, or potentially cottage courts. Like, you know, I don't certainly there's that many parcels to work with, but if you had a large piece of ground, you could arrange the townhouses like we discussed or cottages where you'd get a lot, a number of smaller units on there. So they would do more of house formats than flats, but small.
And I would say that of the three things you presented, the last two are highly related. The more units and the smaller units. They're not totally the same thing, but they're related. But I think that is what we're trying to do, is, is kind of explore. In addition, I mean, the first thing council asks, which we have to think about, is how does the code we have now relate to the houses we have now particularly in the denser areas of the borough? But I think by learning, studying those, we will also learn about how more units could be situated on land and how smaller units could be coded. I think that, and I think those are the two or three things you, you mentioned, right? Smaller units and more units as a way to drive either, at least more of a mix of housing price points in the borough. So my, what I'm trying to argue is, a way to start that is to look at areas of the borough where we have these smaller houses and see, see how the code fits them and see how these smaller structures, uh, how the code could be improved to accommodate them. And then secondly, to think about types that we feel could solve these, address these issues but are, but are missing, whether it's a muse or a cottage court or a fourplex or a sixplex or eightplex. Is there, and again, we're not ready to code them, but I think we're ready to say that for our council, we would be ready. Here are some options. What, what do you think, you know, the, which of these do you think seem to, to fit well with the borough? Which of these do you think address the policy concerns that you brought to us? Because I don't think we're going to get 100% of the direction we think we want until we put something out that at least is a step towards having a conversation.
Get a reaction?
Get a reaction, you know?
It may not be a good idea, but I, I, I think it might be useful to illustrate this with actual site concepts, you know?
Well, like a sketchup or something, which I think you guys, why don't you, because you know why? Because the, how many films always say what you said, yeah, I'm sorry. But it's something that, um, that Turner Mike's team may be able to do, just a little ex- exometric drawings or.
We, those, those drawings exist in the world, you don't even need to create them, do you?
Yeah.
There are thousands of them.
Right, I just feel like unless we're talking about real site, it's too theoretical. With where, right? Show me an example, how many housing units kind of fit somewhere?
I think, I think it could get to that. I don't want to start with that, I don't want to start with thinking, I mean, I'm not, I shouldn't say I'm, I'm suggesting we start by looking at the types and then maybe, uh, we could look at different sites and just sort of test those ideas out.
Right, and, and Todd, and there are plenty of examples, um, you know, like, like it's been said, to introduce people more to some of these units if there's any, any who are less familiar with things like the cottage courts and different illustrations of the four and the six and the eightplex. Um, so it sounds like maybe you want to do something like that before you move on to like a sketchup model on a conceptual lot in Narber?
Yeah, I would think.
Yeah, let me, I, I would just, this is Dennis, I would just jump in following on Mike, is during the meeting, I've been looking at that, the, the map that Mike's have supplied, um, thinking about, it's, I think it'd really be important at the outset to drill, really look at the map and, and get a, get a sense at least somewhat of where there are opportunities for this. Because, I mean, I think we all know it's, it's a, it's a pretty densely, um, filled borough, but there do seem to be areas that could accommodate something. And I, and I think it would be useful for us to kind of take that sort of 30,000 foot view. Uh, maybe not to have, go at this point to find specific locations where you'd mock something up, but just to try to get a sense of, of where those things might be, might be possible, where you might be able to develop that. I keep thinking about, actually about Frank Lloyd Wright's Sun Top Homes in Ardmore, which makes very economical use of a, of a lot because you're, you're, you're sharing party walls with, uh, you know, you have one house with, with three other dwellings and it, and they're all sort of arranged as a cross shape. So, I mean, I think there's some, there's some potential to do some of that, but I, I think at this point, kind of looking at where there are opportunities and where there are not, might, might be kind of a, a good thing to be doing.
For those, um, listening to the meeting, um, the Montgomery County Planning Commission has created a map of the borough that indicates which buildings, uh, in the borough are within the historic district and which ones aren't, which is actually a map that is readily available on the borough's webpage already. And it also maps which buildings are contributing resources to the historic district, which means they cannot be demolished except if there are extraordinary circumstances, and which buildings are not conforming, that means they were built after 1945. Um, that map, we'll, we'll attach that to our minutes. And those are all public records already, but we'll attach that to our minutes so people can see those maps. And those are, those maps are just a resolve of, um, applying the rules in our code already. Where is the historic district and what was built before 1945 and after 1945? And those maps don't indicate anything else except for that information. So we will attach that to our minutes, so folks who are listening in can see those maps.
Well, it'll be, I'm, I'm sorry, if I just jump in again, the other thing that that map shows even, even more so than I think buildings that are contributing and those that are not are lots on which a building, whether historic or not, occupies a relatively small component of that lot. And that, I think that's where maybe some of the opportunities might, might exist.
We did study those, Dennis, and, um, that is what resulted in the, um, the historic district and fill rules we created about three or four years ago. Um, but you're right, um, there's, there's possibilities there on some of those larger lots with historic properties. Um, I guess what I'd like to do at this point in the evening is ask if there's anyone who would, from the planning commission, who would like to, uh, work with, uh, informally with MCPC to help give guidance to their research, uh, um, and their kind of analysis, analysis of these things, given the, the kind of ideas that they've expressed today. Is anyone interested in taking work?
Ralph identified it on, on earlier occasions, that he'd be interested in doing that.
Okay, we'll volunteer Ralph then.
Any objections for Ralph?
He did, he did.
Hearing none.
I mean, I think the main thing is to move very, very small increments, just to increase our understanding of, of, of how the types are coded, work with what we have, where there's gaps, where there's opportunities. So that we can illustrate what some of the Brian Concepts Council has shared with us could potentially mean to get further direction about how to drill down, I think is what we would go for. And Jennifer has already, um, expressed to me an interest in looking at multifamily structures. Um, is there anyone who'd like to work with Jennifer on that?
I'd be interested.
Okay, well, we will, I'll pass it on to her. Um, the last topic that we would launch as a research project is, um, we've talked about this many times and there's really nothing new to talk about in terms of the topic, but it's looking at the recodification, again, the reorganization of the code. Uh, you know, council asked us to look at that, we put that in our letter to council that we'd like to start on that. I, I can report that I have asked, um, the borough manager to convene a meeting with Kevin, uh, with John Walco, um, um, and, and Alan to start talking about from their point of view, what that could mean and what kind of issues legally we might need to be aware of and add, and is agreed, uh, to join that meeting. So you'll be participating in that little project as well. And that'll happen right before our next meeting, that'll happen at the end of October. So that will just be an exploratory conversation. Um, we have an outline which we circulated several times in, in the past and we will, we will just ask them for their feedback on that and then report back in our next meeting about what we hear. Um, so those are the two main research projects we would launch. Um, so, um, I guess what I want to ask is, is there any, is there anyone else who'd like to make any comments about these, this research? Before we take the next steps this month? Any other thoughts you might have or? Mike, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jen.
I would caution, getting back to, uh, housing. I would caution against doing hypothetical redevelopments of land in Narborough graphically. Uh, because they will find their way into the, into the chat, the world of chat. And all hell will break loose.
Well, I think, I think what we ought to do is.
So, so the alternative to that is, um, I can just hear it now. Do you know what the planning commission is proposing to do to my house? There is absolutely no way to prevent the brush fire from breaking out under those conditions. So what I would caution is that we, uh, instead be very generic in anything we do that could be misconstrued as a communist plot. You know? That's all I'm going to say.
Well, I, I think, um, before it ever gets to that point, we should communicate back to council in a more generic way. What the different kinds of building types are that we would like to further investigate. And at least, I mean, even before we get to the point of doing what you say, if we ever do it, I think we need to be comfortable that council would like us to explore something in more detail. Certainly, we ought to go back to them and say on first cut, here are some things we've sort of better code. Here are some building types we think could be important part of the palette in the borough that help achieve the broad goals you've given us. Please give us further, you know, consolidate direction at that level before we go further.
Just a reminder too, that parking will be a problem. And, and just being that, you know, if you're trying to have affordable units in a relatively small town, like it's just not room for lots of parking garages.
That's right. Thank you for that reminder.
Well, I used to like, if we're talking about, because I do, I do envision like you want to talk about the morphology, like, you know, here's a lot and here's what it looks like if you, not a lot, but you know, just hypothetical, like here's what a cottage looks or cottage court looks like. Here's what a, you know, fourplex looks like. Here's what a apartment building looks like and so on. Um, the, as the density goes up, if you require off-street parking, it just doesn't work anymore. So there won't be, nothing will fit on any lots.
That's right. So by the way, that way, um, that may resolve in observations about where certain things might work best. Because there's room either on the streets or on the lots, so. But thank you for that. For that, anyway. Is there anything else? Anyone? It's kind of, who was talking? Okay, um, so, um, at this point, there's other comments on these topics. We will open it up to public comment. Um, either about these topics or other matters before the planning commission. Uh, is there anyone in the public, at this point, it would just be people on Zoom, um, who would like to comment on matters before the commission? Okay, seeing your comments?
Oh, yes, I would. I would. I have my hand up. Carol Marie Scanlon. I have several questions. My first question is, um, um, for planning commission, what are the plans for two oh one Sabine and Sabine Park?
Do you have knowledge of any plans for two oh one Sabine or Sabine Park?
So this is not a spot where the affordable housing is being looked at?
Um, we're not. So basically what you're asking me to do is repeat something which isn't true. Um, we're not looking at that site or any particular sites right now. Um, and we are, affordable housing is a very, um, it's a term that can mean different things to different people. So I wouldn't even say we are looking at that. We are trying to look at ways to bring in different housing types at different price points in the borough.
Okay, so is there, then that brings the next point is what is the definition or the price point of affordable housing? Is there a formula that's used to decide what affordable housing is?
Different kinds of funding programs such as low income housing tax credits or funding through the state housing finance agency, uh, section eight. Uh, they all have their own uh, standards and requirements, but for income levels and percentage of people at that income level who are um, in a particular housing complex. Um, but those are not things that we are looking at at the moment.
So then the, um, um, the area median income is not, doesn't come into play in the formula?
In the formulas I just described.
Right.
For things like, they, you know, I'm not well versed in these, but they're usually tagged, tagged either to uh, median income or poverty levels.
So I, and I'm not an expert in this either, but I think the only time that would come into play as a standard is if the government were providing financing for the project as low income housing. So then there's a a threshold of a certain number of people in the development might have to be at, you know, no more than sixty percent of the median income or something like that. There's whatever the standard is. If it's, if it's a, you know, a project that's using low income housing tax credits as an example. But the, the term affordable, when, if you're talking about economically, uh, a typical definition is that a family is not spending more than thirty percent of their income on housing. So it's not actually tied. It's, it's, that would be at the family level, not at like a region level.
Right. And that's.
That gives, go ahead. Who's speaking?
Uh, it's, it's me. Um, I was going to say that's more of a term of art, so to speak, than it is a a, a, a legal term. Each, each of the various state and federal programs that provide financing or funding for, you know, below market rate housing, I guess it's a good way to put it, have their own criteria, as Adam was saying. And those criteria can be paid to median incomes, poverty levels, those criteria relate to the incomes of people and also the percentage of households in a particular housing complex that have those incomes. Um, so it really is a, if you're looking at it technically, it's, it's a term that is dependent on the, the, the financing program that you're looking at. Um, what Adam was saying is, as a term of art, as a general kind of rule of thumb, uh, affordable housing is often meant to, um, if, to mean, again, not spending more than thirty percent or a third of your income on housing. But that is not a term that has any kind of legal weight or basis that we're aware of. It's just a, like a frame of reference.
Okay, so then with that being said, this is a, a big question I have is when Penrose Development made their, um, presentation, I had, uh, he had said that grants would pay for the housing costs. But a big question I have is if these grants are not available or don't come to fruition or not in perpetuity, who pays the cost of supplementing or supporting the residents of the housing? And he said it could fall on residents, the borough residents.
No, well, I'm not, I don't, it doesn't sound what I heard. I think, but if I understood the Penrose presentation correctly, which was some time ago, and I mean, I may not have this correctly. So I mean, Penrose is the company that develops affordable housing. And to do so, they access, you know, the, the state programs that are there to, uh, you know, allow developers to build housing that's affordable. So they have to meet the state criteria in order to get, say, the tax credits, right? And they explained also that, uh, typically it's actually really hard to make these projects work even just with that funding. And that's, that's why they refer to, there's often a gap. And so it's, it's really a tight rope to walk. But the developer is the one taking the risk for the project. It's, it's essentially a private, uh, business that's using these tax credits. It's not a publicly owned facility. And then they have to keep their covenants to keep the, you know, in terms of making sure the housing actually is affordable. That was my question is who monitors that? But I guess it's, it's a state function to monitor that.
So it's a state function to monitor the housing. And I want to also know, who is this affordable housing geared toward? Is it geared toward Narborough residents? Is it geared toward elderly Narborough residents or veteran Narborough residents? Or is it geared toward outside unhoused homeless shelters from nearby towns or people that come from other countries? I mean, the question is who are we gearing this toward?
Uh, uh, again, I have to note that this is a question based on a false premise. Um, there's nothing in Narborough that we're talking about, so there's no way to answer the question, is it for people in Narborough? That's a, that's a.
In other words, there's no project on the table, the planning commission's looking at.
Uh, in, in, in general, uh, I, I honestly don't know. This is not our field. We are not housing planners or housing experts. We, we asked Penrose here because we, we knew about as little about this as just about anyone. We're trying to learn about ourselves. We're not, we're not really, this is, this is not a field of expertise that we have. Um, but I would like to underscore again, there is no project. Uh, there's no site. Uh, there's, there's nothing anyone can describe about who anything is for, because there's nothing that we're trying to talk about.
But I also think like just, and, and I know what your, you know, the point Cos trying to make is that there's no, there is no project, right? This is all hypothetically where we're sort of saying, what is the borough's? Like, what are we going to do about the fact that housing isn't a forceful? Uh, or, or that there's only luxury housing potentially being developed, only large million dollar, you know, homes and additions to make million dollar homes. And I think in that sense, I mean, even if we're talking about apartment buildings, and again, hypothetically, there's no, there's no like actual apartment building on the agenda here. And the, the reason why the Penrose presentation was interesting is we could totally imagine a market rate apartment building. We have that at just right here downtown, right? Um, that there's no government participation. There's no tax credits. They're just market rate apartments. Uh, the Penrose presentation has imagined a very similar building to that, but that it is, has at least some units set aside for people making a certain percentage of the median income. It has to be affordable to those people based on their income criteria. Or if it was senior housing, there might be a senior housing component and so on. So, you know, I think that there isn't a project on the table, but it's important to recognize that if we do nothing, we might, you know, the status quo is probably what will continue.
So again, along those lines then, um, about, was it forty-four percent of our Narborough residents are renters? Has there been a survey of rental options or even you look at the different housing, as you had said, there's quite a variety of housing, um, levels. You, there's a, you know, three hundred thousand dollar houses. There's a, you know, two million dollar houses. We have quite a variety of housing options. But if you look at the rental options, and again, given whatever the formula is for the, you know, affordable housing, Narborough does have a lot of options that are, that fall into the affordable housing definition. I know apartment buildings that rent for, you know, twelve hundred dollars a month. I mean, that's in the affordable range. So that's why I think it's doing back work of finding out exactly what is here and what the rental options are of all the different apartments would be a really good place to start rather than trying to fix something that isn't broken.
Understood.
I mean, is that something on the plan is to check to see what is around and, and what the different housing options are?
From a cost point of view?
No, well, just to see what's available. I mean, look at the different, you know, look at the different things that are available, you know, work with the Realtor and find out what different apartments are. Because, I mean, on one hand, we're only a half square mile borough. We are so small. We are so dense. And other towns have more need than we do for low income housing. And they have more resources. I mean, we don't have the resources that, that a lot of towns in Montgomery County have.
I don't think the focus here, you're, you're using a term of low income housing. You keep inserting terms into the conversation that are not the terms we're talking about.
Well, talk about low income housing and then.
You're, you're the point that perhaps we should understand what the, uh, the ranges of, um, you know, uh, rents that are being offered on the market. Uh, so we should familiarize ourselves with that. I think that, um, you know, that's, that's a fair point, but I, I don't, I don't, you know, please do not ask questions that are inserting terms into the dialogue that we're not having here.
So then change the term to affordable housing. Um, are we still, you know, can we, can, can there still be, um, I don't know, surveys or studies or inquiries done to see what is the housing market in our area? Affordable housing for, you know, a three hundred thousand dollar house that's been sold recently versus a twelve hundred dollar apartment that's available. So there are affordable housing options that perhaps are not being explored for the thought of developing, you know, four, six, eightplexes or double apartments or cottage houses, you know, that, you know, what you're talking about. We might be trying to solve a problem that really isn't a problem when you go about looking to see what is available.
Well, you know, the housing market consists of a lot of tiers. Uh, and I think what we're really focusing on here is where uh, investment goes in the borough in terms of additions, new construction and trying, I mean, that, that is the margins where we have the ability to save things. The problem with doing a, a survey of uh, price points or rents is those, those can change dramatically from month to month to month. And I, I think, you know, it would be useful to know a little bit more about that, but I, I don't think that that is um, necessarily the same question that we're looking at. What we're trying to look at is what are the, uh, what are the forces that are driving the new construction in the borough? Uh, what are the forces that are driving people attempting to tear down houses? Uh, and what are the, uh, you know, what are the ways in which our code might be preventing the types of uh, housing that we already have in the borough? So, you know, I, I don't, I don't think that we are necessarily um, trying to solve only for someone who's lucky enough to be able to rent a twelve hundred. Uh, uh, you know, another, another way to look at it too is, is, I'm not sure where you can find a twelve hundred dollar a month apartment to rent, but that may in fact be in a house that's been, um, um, you know, divided into a couple of units. And so I think that is, that is an interesting to, thing to look at from a, you know, a governing point of view. Do we allow houses to be divided in that separate unit so that we can continue having rents like that? I don't, I don't think one thing precludes another. Um, I, I think that even though you may be able to find units at certain price points in the borough, our, our hope is to look and see and make sure there are policies in terms of land use that are not inadvertently, uh, driving those types of, of rents, um, driving those types of units out of, out of existence. They're not, I don't think those are exclusive things.
Now, I, can I, yeah, I would just suggest, I think that as far as a course of action, right? We can inquire if it's feasible for the Montgomery County Planning Commission staff to summarize whatever data might exist about current housing. So whether that's American Community Survey, recent sales data, whatever, like if there, if that is compilable in an efficient way, then you know, that would be the database that we have for, for housing. The, what we've been, we've, we're responding to what we've been asked to do by council. And so I think we would be taking our direction from council to. And so I think we would be taking our direction from council to investigate either additional, as Todd pointed out, like, you know, as the chair points out, like, is the zoning code preventing some kinds of development that, you know, people might want if the zoning code were not preventing it? And that the, the borough is in fact willing to host as determined by its elected officials, the council? And so really, this question of policy, what are the goals of the borough and so on? And ultimately, what, what we do is a question for council. They're elected by the people. But we would just be, you know, essentially, again, this is what a cottage court looks like, this is what a rowhouse development looks like, whatever, you know, this is what a small apartment building looks like, and things that may not be allowed under the zoning today. Right?
Okay. All right. I still think a really good place to start would be to see what we have already. Because I know apartments that are available for $1,200 a month, just, you know, as a price point. So I think it might be nice to see what's here before you do too much more work. You might not need to do the work.
We can see if there are data sets available.
Okay, thank you.
Great, County Planning Commission. Carolyn, do you have any other questions?
Um, no, I think that sums it up.
Okay. We appreciate you attending our meeting. We wish more people would. So thank you.
So do I. I wish more people would go to all the different meetings.
So with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. A second?
Second.
All in favor of adjourned? Okay, thank you all very much. And good night.